Yung siya na, heko.
Ano 'yung mga madali bilisana?
Hindi naman pwede pinanood. Dun na daw. Gano'n 'yung may mas. Gano'n lang. Dun lang sa nation. Gano'n 'yung may mga kakatay. Gano'n na ganun.
Pursue what the section 15h rule for the rules of the house of representatives. The speaker after comparing with the deputy speakers has designated the honorable Gulyas of the first district of Cebu to today's, to be today's presiding officer.
Session is called to order. Everyone please rise for the Philippine national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero saan silang anan? Alam ng puso sa titik moy buhay. Lupang giniram, kuya ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisingil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langitong pagka. May nilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilabahan. Ang kissap ng wata at mo'y tawag may narapinikil. Ang pituwing na parang ya kaylan pa may matidilig. Lupan ang araw ng walang amig pagsitka. Uyay labit sa titik. Aming ligaya dapat may mahapin. At mahatay ng dalung sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for defer the calling of the roll.
There's a motion to dispense with the calling of the roll.
Objection.
Session suspended.
That's what he said, that's what he meant, that's what he meant. Shut up. Pag 'yung susunod, 'yung unu, hindi ko pagkasali, suspend it later. Mean shut up.
Oo, toto'yo. Lahat, hindi mo pwede tumalat. Buti pa, Goberno eh. Lhasa lang sabang pinipirman eh, na maging yan. Goberno? Eh, sige pre, mga pap-dokumento na sa, sa ano, hindi ka do. Ano 'yan? Ben-iskalnisa, bugay lang, ben-iskalnisa. Oh, dayker, ano dayker, pinis ko. Eh, Goberno, hindi pa pinipirman sa dayker 'yan eh. Sige pre, andami 'yan, 'yan may city eh, may city. Oh, nakhili, takadun, oh. Oh, pinasagawa 'yun? Pinasagawa 'yun, sige pre, dalon libo, dalon libo. Pinasagawa 'yun. Pero pinis ko na sa. Kaya iba'y pinirman sa gan'yan. Ako 'yung iba ko na talaga. Maka, eh, iba ko na, talaga.
Happy Christmas!
Limcaychong. Lobrigat. López Benur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magodadatos Huarto. Magodadatos Ajit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mourinho. Márquez. Martínez. Matugas. Miliana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralles Jerigo. Nogralles Carlo.
Akosna Alba Adjong Adbingkula Agarau Agabao Aglipay Bilyar Albano Alkala Alihano Almario Almonte Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Mercedes Alvarez Mantalyon Amante Amatong Andaya Angara Castillo Antonino Antonio Aragonés Arbizon Arcillas Arenas Atienza Aumentado Bagau Bagaching Bagilat Banal Barbers Barsaga Batawil Batucabe Bautista Bandigan Belaro Belmonte Villasiano Belmonte Jose Cristoper Belmonte Ricardo Benitez Bernos Bertis Biazon Millones Birón Bolilia Bondok Bordado Bravo Anthony Bravo Maravida Brosas Bulot Big Tang Cagas Calderón Calixtropiano Caminero Campos Canama Gari Casilau Castelo Casa Franz Casa Fredenil Katamco Cayetano Celeste Serávica Ciriles Chávez Chupeco Co Kuango Juliantes Cortés Cortuna Osalan Crisólogo Kua Cuarezma Cueva Delipe Dalog Daza De Suss De Venexia De Vera Defensor Delmar Del Rosario De Losa Montalia Dimpaporo Abdullah Dimpaporo Kalip Duavit Durano Di Elago Enverga Erisé Regel Ermita Boyain Escudero Espina Espino Estrella Giuseppeo Iberdone Pariñas Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Ferial Florrendo Flores Fortun Fortuno Fentebelia Garbin Garcia Guendolin Garcia Jose Garcia Albano Gary Richard Gary Sharon Gasataya Tachalian Jerón Guanaprestina Gomart Gómez Gonzaga González Alexandria González Alex... González Aurelio Dom González Fernando Goriseta Gulyas Hernández Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Co Kongun Labad Labad Laxson Lagman Lanete Laugán Lasatin Lechón Li Limcaychong Lobrigat López Benur López Carlo López Manuel Loyola Makapagalaroyo Maceda Madrona Malapitan Manalo Mangawang Mangodatatus Huarto Mangodatatus Ajit Marcoleta Marcos Mourinho Márquez Martínez Matugas Miliana Mending Mendoza Mercado Mirasol Montoro Nava Nieto Noel Nograles Jerigo Nograles Carlo Nolasco Núñez Malañaón Waminal Okampo Olivares Ong Edwin Ong Henry Ortega Pablo Ortega Vini Pacquiao Paduano Palma Pancho Panganiban Panotes Papandayan Pichai Pimentel Pineda Plaza Primicia Segabás Kimbo Radasa Ramiresato Ramos Relampagos Rivilia Roma Puno Robes Rocamora Rodríguez Isidro Rodríguez Maximo Roman Romero Romualdes Romualdo Roque Ari Roque Ruelio Saktalan Segarderia Salí Salceda Salimbagón Salo Salón Zambar Sandoval Santos Rector Sarmito César Sarmito Edgar Savillano Semah Xiao Singzon Silverio Suansing Estrelita Suansing Horacio Suárez Sielbarado Tambunting Tan Angelina Tan Milagrosa Tan Shani Tejada Teves Chanco Ting Tiño Tolentino Trenyas Tugna Tupas Torabinataman Ti Umalí Unavia Ungab Uniko Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Uy Barreta Vargas Vargas Alfonso Villarde Velasco Velasco Catera Veloso Vergara Villapuerte Villanueva Villara Suárez Villarica Villarin Villago Yap Arthur Yap Mileso Yap Victor Yu Somor Marakarmen Somor Ronaldo Sarate Subiri
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 229 members responded to the call.
With 229 members responded to the call, the Chair declares a quorum.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Boyay Partilis?
Again, we would like to stress that there are enough members on the floor constituting a quorum. Yes, we have much more than a quorum. But the count of the secretariat this time jives with our count, and that is surprising. I'd like to put that on record. Their count now, today, is accurate. Thank you.
The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, your honor, as usual, we manifest that it's the count of the plenary tellers that we use as the official count for our quorum. With that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the reference of business. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Here's none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move that we consider Committee Report Number 47 on House Bill 4727. For that purpose, could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure? So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 4727 from Committee Report 47.
House Bill Number 4727, not imposing the death penalty on certain heinous crimes, repealing for the purpose of Public Act Number 9346, entitled and not prohibiting the imposition of death penalty in the Philippines, and further amending Act Number 815 as amended, otherwise known as the Vice Penal Code, and Republic Act Number 9165, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act of 2002.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Boyay Partilis?
Yes, before we start deliberating on the all-important measure of 4727, I would like to pose a query on the Majority Floor Leader's position. Since yesterday, we adjourned on a question of defining Section 116, which pertains to nominal voting.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the gentleman from Manila be given five minutes to explain his manifestation.
Uh, gentleman from Boyay Partilis, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yesterday, this representation and Congressman Harry Roque and several other members of Congress were insisting on being given the chance of enjoying the privilege and the right to have a nominal voting, since we wanted to be sure that the issue that was raised on the floor and decided by the body with eyes and knees, we would have a more definite count and more reliable, faithful to the real sentiments of the body. So we were citing Section 116, which clearly provides the right of this body to have a nominal voting on very important issues. Well, Section 116 states nominal voting. I'd like to read it into the record. Upon motion of a member duly approved by one-fifth of the members present, there being a quorum, nominal voting on any question may be called. In case of nominal voting, the Secretary General shall call in alphabetical order the names of the members who shall state their vote as their names are called. Alam ko po naman na ang ating secretariat is well-versed on this particular provision, because we use nominal voting in many occasions where we are approving measures on second reading. So at this point in time, we want a definitive position coming from the Majority Leader, so that our proceedings will go on smoothly and we will not waste time on defining, redefining, and misinterpreting in the process, distorting the intentions of Congress. One-fifth of the body decides on the nominal voting issue. The presiding officer, with all due respect to the gentleman now presiding, does not have the power to refuse that. He has to throw the question on the floor, and we have to decide whether we would want a nominal voting or not. If we cannot gather one-fifth of those present, then the motion is automatically lost. But if we have more than one-fifth agreeing, in fact, wanting a nominal voting, then we should grant that automatically without further debating. So that tumakbukuan ang ating procedures mas maayos at mas magiging credible itong ating ginagawang trabahong ito on the all-important issue of the death penalty. With that, I'd like to get the response of the Majority Floor Leader.
The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, your honor. Mr. Speaker, it says in Section 115, the manner of voting, that if the speaker doubts the results of the voting or a motion to divide the house is carried, thus shall the house divide. In our past votation, it has been very clear as to the results of the voting, and we enjoined our members to refrain from using the microphone and our dear kababayans in the gallery from joining into the voting so that we can get the true sentiment of the house. There has not yet been a need for us to go into nominal voting, but should the time arise, the majority will gladly accede to the will of the body should nominal voting be called for.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Kabayan Partilis?
Mr. Speaker, I believe I have a pending motion for nominal voting. And while I do not dispute the provision of 115, provision 116 of our rules is also very clear, that upon motion of any member for nominal voting, it is incumbent for this body to determine if there's one-fifth vote in support of the motion for nominal voting. I believe, Mr. Speaker, this has not been acted upon by, um... There has not been any ruling made by the, um, presiding officer, um, and therefore, I reiterate my motion that we have nominal voting on the last amendment that was discussed yesterday, Mr. Speaker.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor. We have the highest respect.
Mr. Speaker. Please allow the Majority Leader to first respond to the query of, uh, gentleman from Kabayan Partilis.
I reserve the right to reply to the Majority Leader's statement.
Yes, at the proper time, uh, gentleman from Samar.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, we have the highest esteem for the gentleman from, uh, the Partilis Kabayan, but his motion was lost in yesterday's proceeding. But when we open the period of amendments and for subsequent actions of the body politic, we will entertain the appropriate motions should the body so decide.
Mr. Speaker, um, with all due respect to the Majority Floor Leader, actually, I do not even recall what that was the subject of our viva voche voting yesterday. May I inquire again for the record, what was the last subject of our viva voche voting when I raised the issue of nominal voting, Mr. Speaker?
The Majority Leader.
So with the indulgence of the Honorable Daza, I will first reply to the Honorable Roque. Let me clear up our parliamentary status. We are in consideration of House Bill 4727, and our last directive yesterday was for the secretariat of House Plenary to prepare a clean copy of the amendments that I proposed and were approved on the floor. So we proceed from this point, Mr. Speaker, your honor. We will now be considering individual amendments to our House Bill as amended yesterday, and all members are free to propose amendments, which will be accepted or denied by the Honorable Chair, who we hope to recognize.
But, Mrs. Speaker, I recall yesterday that Deputy Speaker Castro already had two... Or was it, um, the Majority Floor Leader proposed two individual amendments? So do I take it that we begin anew from scratch on individual amendments? We go back to the provisions that were already discussed yesterday, because, as mentioned by Congressman Atienza and Congressman Lagman yesterday, we were entertaining individual amendments without the benefit of a clean copy of, um, the bill that is being discussed for possible amendments.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, our parliamentary status is that we are in consideration now of 4727, the House Bill of which a clean copy is provided. And this clean copy is being provided really for the understanding of all members. In previous occasions, such as the budget or in other House Bills, amendments are freewheeling, and it is up to the members themselves to keep track of the individual amendments. But we have gone out of our way to furnish the body with a clean copy, which the Honorable Roque can now propose amendments to at this point, because individual amendments. We are in the period of individual amendments, and it is now open. May I recognize, Mr. Speaker, our honorable sponsor, so he can now accept individual amendments from our colleagues who have registered, including the Honorable Roque, who is third on our list.
The honorable sponsor, the Chairman of the Committee on Justice, distinguished colleague, Honorable Reynaldo Umalí from Oriental Mindoro is recognized for amendments.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I, I reserve...
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Samar?
I, I would like to put on record a matter relating to the question on nominal voting. Now, Section 116 of the rules.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we give the Honorable Daza five minutes to explain his manifestation.
Uh, the Honorable, uh, gentleman from, uh, Samar is recognized and to have a five-minute explanation of his point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Section 116 states, quote, "Nominal voting. Upon motion of a member duly approved by one-fifth of the members present, there being a quorum, nominal voting on any question may be called." Now, this is not, this is not just a matter in the rules. The Constitution provides explicitly in Article 3, Section 16, Paragraph 4, and it says, quote, "And the yeas and ayes on any question shall, at the request of one-fifth of the members present, be entered in the journal," unquote. In other words, this is not a matter which is just under the rules, but this provision, the rules, is in compliance with the constitutional provision. And according to the practices of the past Congress, and I would like to quote them into the record, it is the constitutional right of any member in the House on any question to ask for nominal voting. Now, I have with me this book to which I've already adverted to, "The Rules of the House of Representatives" by Dr. Inocencio Pareja. There is a copy of this book in the Library of the House of Representatives. And what does it say? It says on page 400, quote, "A vote by yeas and ayes entered on the journal shall be taken, even after a vote by division has been had at the desire of one-fifth of the members present," unquote. Now, the precedents have been set here. In the House of Representatives that sat in 1945, and it's quoted on the same page, it is stated, quote, "Upon motion supported by one-fifth of the members present, nominal voting was taken on a motion to postpone," unquote. The nominal voting was only on a motion to postpone. And then precedents in the US Congress, which is also under our rules, a supplementary rule of interpretation. And it's on page 401 of the book. It says, from page 400 to 401, "This is a precedent in the House of Representatives from which we borrowed this rule, and this provision in the Constitution is lifted from the US Constitution," Mr. Speaker. And it says here, quote, "The right to demand the yeas and ayes is a constitutional..." "The right to demand the yeas and ayes is a constitutional privilege, which may not be denied or abridged and may not be ruled as mandatory, but to be construed liberally in favor of the demand by any member." The constitutional right to demand the yeas and ayes does not exist as to a second motion when such is required by the Rules. In other words, the right to demand for nominal voting upon the assertion that there are one-fifth of the members present in support of the demand for a nominal voting is not merely granted by the Rules. It is a constitutional right of a member and it is a constitutional duty on the part of the House to respect this constitutional provision.
The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, your honor, we note with gravity the comments of the Honorable Daza, who was an esteemed lawmaker even when I was still a young child. So your points are well taken, his points are very well taken and will be applied at the proper time, Mister Speaker, your honor, at the wish of the plenary. Thank you for your manifestation, Honorable Daza.
Thank you, gentlemen from Northern Samar, uh, from Samar. Uh, I recognize now the distinguished sponsor of House Bill 4727 to accept or not accept the amendments to be laid by our fellow members. The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for, first, to make his individual amendments to our House Bill 4727 as amended. I move for the recognition of the Honorable Deputy Speaker from the First District of Camarinesur, the Honorable Rolando Andaya Jr.
The Deputy Speaker from the First District of Camarinesur, distinguished gentleman Rolando Andaya is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Is the Chairman ready?
Uh, with the pleasure, Mister Speaker, your honor.
Thank you very much. My proposed amendment would be on page 1. From line 1 to line 21, delete Section 1, Section 2, Section 3. Then page 2, on line 2 to line 6, delete the whole paragraph. And as a consequence of such, amend the title to read as follows. "An Act Imposing the Death Penalty on Crimes enumerated Under Republic Act 9165, Otherwise Known as the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act of 2002." I submit, Mister Speaker.
What does this sponsor say?
So it is, uh, just to clarify, uh, Mister Speaker, your honor, you wanted to change the, uh, title of the bill and directly, uh, move for amendment of the Dangerous Drugs Act, Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act. Is that, uh...
That is correct, the intention.
Uh, if your honor, please, uh, uh, we are not prepared to accept that, uh, proposed amendment because the focus really of this particular bill is just to amend the penalty by increasing it from, uh, reclusión perpetua to death instead of just, uh, in the law itself because the law, uh, provides for a penalty of, uh, life imprisonment. We're changing this to, or we are amending it to, uh, be consistent with what the, uh, Code of Crimes, uh, uh, Committee is now working on to change the nomenclature of, uh, the penalties to be imposed under the Revised Penal Code and/or, uh, special laws which will be incorporated in the Code of Crimes. So, uh, we are not amending the Dangerous Drugs Act only, but this is really, uh, uh, a new law that really imposes death penalty on heinous crimes which, uh, uh, are deemed required for compelling reasons as defined by the Constitution.
May I be given five minutes to explain my position, Mister Speaker?
You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Just to take a little trip down memory lane, under administration of President Ramos, RA 7659 restored capital punishment. And it is in this particular bill, for the first time, that the word "heinous crime" was used. And it's the first time it was defined. It was the first time that standards of how a heinous crime should be defined. It also listed 13 crimes, major crimes. And if you add the minor crimes covered under heinous crimes, which amount around 21 crimes, Mister Speaker. Now, under the administration of President Rollo, a bill was passed, RA 9346, which merely repealed the imposition of death penalty. It did not, and I would like to emphasize this, Mister Speaker, it did not repeal RA 7659. It did not repeal the definition. It did not repeal the enumeration of these 13 major crimes. Now, under our current House Bill 4727, we are using the exact template of RA, the original bill under President Ramos, for, uh, which was 7659. Now, if we, if we are to pass the bill, it becomes slow in its present form. You have to remember, if I'm not mistaken, Mister Chairman, House Bill 4727 does not repeal the original death penalty bill. It does not. And it is in existence at this point in time. So if this House Bill 4727 comes in existence, you now have an absurd situation in which you have the same definition of a heinous crime, the same standards of a heinous crime, except one has a listing of 13 major crimes and another one with just one crime. Now, and, and, of course, we all know that this will undergo the test of constitutionality. And one of the guarantees of constitution is the equal application of the law. We all know that from law school. And this applies not only to privileges given to the government by the government, but also the burden given by government in certain crimes. So basically, those who belong to the same group should be treated the same way. And in this particular situation, there is a test. And the first test would be, is there any substantial distinction between drug pushing or, let's say, uh, mass murder? Using the same standard, is drug pushing more odious? Is it more repugnant? Is it more vicious? Or is it more hateful? It, it, it's not. It's almost the same. What I'm trying to say is, let's not insist on following the template of the original death penalty law. Let it be a standalone law. Otherwise, we will violate the equal protection law, Mister Speaker. Second, is it germane to the purpose of the law? What is the purpose of this bill anyway? Our purpose, as agreed upon in the caucus, is to make the crime of drugs and its all, all its crimes under it be punishable by death. We cannot have the excuse that there are pending bills which might be filed in the future which will fall under heinous crimes. Wala pa ho yun eh. Ito nandito na. And if you apply the test again of equal protection, it will fail. And the dangerous part there, Mister Speaker, if this particular provision or enumeration is declared unconstitutional because it is not protective or is not, uh, follow the equal protection law, then you have a situation which you have successfully legislated the return of the death penalty, but hindi lang para sa isa, para sa lahat na because na declare ng unconstitutional 'yung isa lang na krimen dahil ang totoong enumeration.
May I remind the gentleman, the Deputy Speaker, that you have already consumed the five-minute rule?
Uh, can I consume another five minutes?
Uh, no more, uh, sorry, Deputy Speaker, the, the rule under Section 56 explicitly says you have only five minutes.
Yes, can I make my closing statement now? And as a practical reason, as a practical reason for this amendment, if you relieve the title this way and you relieve the definition and standards of heinous crime present in this particular bill, there is no, there is a possibility that during BiCam Conference Committee, we can include more crimes under this particular bill contrary to what we have agreed upon. Ang usapan natin isa lang. If you leave this the way it is worded, you can put some more crimes, even more than the 13 crimes because it is covered in the title and in the policy of this particular bill.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker. You have five minutes to respond.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, your honor. There is no distinction. They are both heinous crimes as defined, uh, even by, uh, the case of people versus Echegaray. Uh, the only difference is that the Constitution provides that there must be compelling reason. And at this point in time, uh, the intent of this bill is really to impose death penalty on cer- certain heinous crimes. And so, uh, we are not violating the equal protection of, uh, the law, uh, principle uh, under the Constitution because, uh, while we are imposing death penalty, we are not imposing death penalty as of the moment only. Uh, we are not, uh, we will impose death penalty for heinous crimes. But we are presenting, uh, uh, the war on drugs in particular as one of the compelling reasons why we should, uh, reimpose death penalty on drug cases. Anyway, uh, and this is very much germane to the purpose, uh, um, purpose of the law because the intent really is, uh, in the future, we can reimpose also death penalty on other heinous crimes uh, which, uh, will find compelling reasons for the imposition thereof. Now, uh, uh, on the matter of, um, the point of, uh, of, uh, your honor, that, uh, in the BiCam Conference, there may be, uh, uh, a possibility of increasing or incorporating crimes therein. Of course, uh, this is an agreement of the House of Representatives, which is a co-equal body of the Senate. Then, uh, we will not agree to any, uh, additional crimes that will be incorporated in this bill. So, uh, uh, this will be the point here of, uh, the distinguished gentleman is that, uh, uh, to this representation, uh, this is fear of the unknown that, uh, uh, I believe, uh, will never happen because we will stand by our position that we will not accept uh, any additional crimes to be incorporated and/or covered uh, by this bill that we will approve.
There is an amendment coming from the Deputy Speaker Andaya. And the amendment is not accept, uh, the sponsor is not accepting the amendment, so...
I'd like to make an appeal to the body, Mister Speaker.
The Majority Leader.
And may be given five minutes to explain before we take the appeal.
I have given you five minutes.
Yes, but that was for the proposal of the bill.
The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, your honor, the Honorable Deputy Speaker has proposed his amendment. It has been rejected. His five minutes was already the appeal. It was also explained by the sponsor why he is rejecting. We now go to voting.
Yes.
So, may I please explain our status? Those in favor of the appeal, please vote aye. And the majority backing the decision of our sponsor, we ask for your nay vote. We ask our colleagues to please not use the microphone. And we ask them, those watching in the gallery, to please respect our proceedings and allow the congressmen to vote properly. So once again, an aye vote sustains the appeal of the amendment of the Deputy Speaker. And a nay vote supports our honorable sponsor in defeating the amendment. And the majority asks for your nay vote. That is our status, Mister Speaker.
Those who are in favor to the amendment proposed by Deputy Speaker Andaya, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The nays have it, the amendment is lost. The Majority Leader.
Can I move for a nominal voting?
Under our rules, under our rules, Mister Speaker, if there is a doubt regarding the voting, the House shall divide. To make it simple, Mister Speaker, your honor, to satisfy our honorable Deputy Speaker, as it says in our rules, the Speaker shall ask those in favor to rise, to be followed by those against. So we will see, Mister Speaker, those in favor, there are a total of 229 who responded to our call. One-fifth is 46. So if 46 of our members rise, then we will proceed to nominal voting.
May I, uh, request, those who are in favor to the amendment sponsored by Deputy Speaker Andaya, nominal voting. Those who are in favor for nominal voting, please rise. Thank you. Those who are against, please rise. The against has it. Nominal voting, the motion for nominal voting is lost.
Thank you.
The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, your honor, the Honorable Andaya is still recognized to propose further amendments.
Now I'm done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
With that, Mister Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from the lone district of Siquehore, the Honorable Rabro Camora, for his amendments.
Uh, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from the First District of Palbay?
The amendment of individual members should be based on a page-by-page, line-by-line basis. It is not by prior registration. We are now finished with page 1. We are now going to page 2. I have, uh, amendments to page 2. Unless, page 2 is starting with line 14. Unless there are anterior amendments, I should have the floor.
The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, your honor, at the outset, let me thank the Honorable Lagman for his amendments. I believe he will now be voting in favor of the bill since he is helping to perfect our legislation. And we in the majority appreciate that. But, uh, may I just explain that? We have a list of colleagues of ours who have listed themselves to propose their amendments. And by leave of the House, we will follow the list in order to make our proceedings easier to understand, both for the members and for the public regarding this bill. So I seek the indulgence of the Honorable Lagman to please allow our colleagues. And at the proper time, we will recognize the esteemed gentleman and give him the necessary time for his amendments.
The tradition of the House is that individual amendments should be based on a page-by-page, line-by-line basis, not by reservation. We have already finished page 1. Let us now go to page 2.
And I have a couple of amendments on page two. And the majority leader is not at liberty to say that I am now in favor of the bill, because I am proposing amendments.
With due indulgence, the gentleman from the first district of Albay.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, please.
We are now going to recognize, I am now going, the chair is going to recognize for, as a motion, as move by the majority leader, the representative from Siquehore, Congressman Rokamora. And at the proper time, we will recognize the distinguished gentleman from Albay.
Mr. Speaker, please.
The distinguished gentleman from Siquehore is recognized for his amendment to the proposed, uh, bill as amended.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I, I believe that better part of discretion is to follow procedure. To have, um, to observe proper procedure, uh, we should start with the earlier pages. I am proposing an amendment on page three, while the Congressman Lagman is proposing an amendment on page two. Then...
Please proceed.
Um, I will, uh, allow Congressman Lagman to have his prop- his amendment first on page two, then I'll proceed with mine thereafter.
Uh, gentlemen from Siquehore, we would like to have a properly and orderly proceedings. So, everything that who wants to have an amendment to the proposed bill as amended, please, uh, uh, let the majority leader take the sequences.
I, I, I believe that's a proper sequence, uh, Mr. Speaker. An amendment on page two before an amendment on page three.
The majority leader?
With the indulgence of the gentleman who have registered, if that is the wish of those who will, will, uh, propose amendments, I move that we recognize the honorable Edsel Lagman for his amendments, and we thank him for his support of this legislation.
The honorable gentleman from the first district of Albay, distinguished Edsel Lagman is recognized for his amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
These, uh, amendments will not be in support of, uh, the proposed death penalty bill, definitely. On, uh, page two, line four, before the words "reclusión perpetua", insert the following words, "reclusión temporal two", and delete the words "to death" after the words "reclusión perpetua". Accordingly, as proposed, line fourteen should read as follows: "reclusión temporal to reclusión perpetua", period.
What does the sponsor say?
Uh, the, uh, sponsor is not amenable to the, uh, uh, proposed amendment of, uh, the, our distinguished colleague.
The sponsor is not accepting the amendment proposed by the distinguished gentleman from Albay.
So pursuant to our rules, I would now appeal the rejection of my amendment to the body, and I'm requesting for five minutes.
You have five minutes, uh, to explain your, uh, your, uh, your amendments.
The following are the justifications for this amendment. One, the Philippines is a state party to the Second Optional Protocol to the International Convention on Civil and Political Rights, wherein the Philippines has irrevocably committed not to impose the death penalty on any crime, including drug-related offenses. Number two, international law jurisprudence and the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, to which again, the Philippines is a signatory, authoritatively, authority, authoritatively and indubitably declare that a state cannot use its domestic law, including its constitution, to renege on or violate its treaty undertakings. Number three, the nineteen-eighty-eight U- UN Drug Convention, to which the Philippines is likewise a state party, does not prescribe death penalty on drug-related offenses. Number four, the International Narcotics Control Board has consistently advised countries not to impose the death penalty on any drug-related offenses, because capital punishment violates the right to life. Number five, the International Narcotics Control Board has also reported that, and I quote, "Over four decades of global drug control analysis, the board has borne witness to socioeconomic drivers of drug dependence, which cut across national, cultural, and generational divides. In all parts of the world, populations are affected by poverty, food insecurity, economic inequality, social exclusion, deprivation, displacement, shortages, shortages of educational and recreational facilities, limited employment prospects, poor parental engagement during early childhood, and exposure to violence and abuse. These factors play into both the demand and supply sides of illicit drug abuse, driving both drug dependence and illicit trafficking, and require an integrated, holistic, and balanced response from states." Consequently, what the International Narcotics Control Board is saying is that the solution to the drug problem is not the imposition of the death penalty. Number six, the proponents of House Bill Number forty-seven-twenty-seven have failed to conclusively present compelling reasons why that as the, why, why that should be imposed as the maximum penalty on the code importation of dangerous drugs and/or controlled precursors and essential chemicals. For all of those reasons, Mr. Speaker, I appeal the rejection by the sponsoring committee of my amendment.
The sponsor? The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, your honor, the honorable Lagman has proposed his amendment. It has been rejected by the sponsor. The appeal has been made, and now therefore we go to voting. And may I explain the voting? A vote of "aye" sustains the amendment of the honorable Lagman, and a vote of "nay", which the sponsor and the majority asks for, defeats the amendment. The majority asks for your "nay" vote.
Those who are in favor to the amendment presented by the gentleman from the first district of Albay, please say "aye". Those who are against, please say "nay". The "nays" have it. The amendment is lost. The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, under section one-one-six of our rules, I am entitled to move for a nominal voting.
The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, your honor, our process will be as such. If you, the speaker doubts the results of the voting or a motion to divide the House is carried, the speaker shall ask those in favor to rise. So those in favor of nominal voting shall be asked by the speaker to rise.
Those who are in favor to nominal voting, please rise. The motion for nominal voting is lost. The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move for the recognition of the honorable Rav Rokamora of the lone district of Siquehore, who is our next colleague to propose an amendment.
The gentleman from the lone district of Siquehore, Congressman Rokamora is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I have an anterior amendment on page two. The honorable Rokamora has an amendment on page three.
The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, does the honorable Rokamora yield the floor?
What was that? I'm sorry, I did not hear that. Two, two, Edsel?
Mr. Speaker, if the, with the indulgence of the honorable Rokamora, the honorable Edsel Lagman wishes to propose more amendments.
On page two.
Uh, Congressman Rokamora?
Um, I, uh, as I understand, there is also a proposal to amend, uh, under, um, an amendment under page one, and an additional amendment on page two. Uh, I will give into the, um, earlier amendments.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my motion for the recognition of the honorable Rokamora. With the indulgence of the honorable Edsel Lagman, I move for the recognition of the honorable Rodante Marcoletta of the Partilis One Sagip. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
The representative from, uh, Alagad Partilis, uh, Rodante Ma- uh, uh, Rodante Marcoletta is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I propose amendment, Mr. Speaker, under line eleven of page one. After the phrase "rule of law", I propose that the entire phrase and the need to rationalize and harmonize the penal sanctions will be eliminated. So after that, Mr. Speaker, this whole paragraph will be read as follows: "Towards this end, in the interest of justice, public order, and the rule of law, the Congress finds compelling reasons to impose the death penalty on heinous crimes committed by offenders who are a continuous threat to society." Mr. Speaker, the reason why I propose this amendment, and I, uh, hope that it will be accepted, is because I believe in the co-cuses that I have attended, the final version of the amended draft, uh, Mr. Speaker, which we are now considering only drug-related cases, was not a product of rationalizing and harmonizing the penal sanctions, because the entire revised penal code, Republic Act three-eight-one-five was eliminated. This is not rationalization, your honor, Mr. Speaker. It is neither harmonization. I think in the, uh, co-cuses which I attended, it was a product of consensus building. We arrived at a consensus until the majority chose to drop all the crimes and maintain only drug-related cases. And therefore, we might be facing a very hard wall in defending that we were able to rationalize and harmonize the penal sanctions. We did not, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, what does the sponsor say?
To eliminate the phrase...
Mr. Speaker?
The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, we appeal to the honorable Marcoletta. First, he has to propose the amendment, then the sponsor will accept or reject it. After the acceptance or rejection, he may have five minutes to appeal. So, first let us hear from the sponsor regarding the amendment proposed.
The gentleman from, uh, Partilis, Alagad Partilis, uh, Rodante Marcoletta has already, uh, explained his amendment. So what does the sponsor say?
Um, your, uh, Mr. Speaker, your honor, uh, I regret that we are not amenable and we reject the proposed amendment, because, uh, in fact, we are harmonizing, rationalizing and harmonizing the penal sanctions, because this is the direction of the Code, uh, Code of Crimes Committee that is now working on the Code of Crimes to replace the revised penal code, as well as, uh, the consolidation therein of, um, uh, all special laws. In fact, we are harmonizing the, uh, penal sanction, because what is contained in the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act is that the penalty is life imprisonment, which we are changing to or amending to reclusión perpetua, uh, so that we will go away with, uh, the, uh, uh, reference to life imprisonment, imprisonment in a special law, which is the direction also of the Code of Crimes.
Mr. Speaker, may I explain, uh, the proposed amendment?
You have five minutes.
Mr. Speaker, the reason, the reason why I propose this amendment is because I did not see, and I did not... I did not know how the committee was able to rationalize and harmonize the penal sanctions by simply reducing the number of crimes, let's say from twenty-one criminal offenses to concentrate merely on the drug-related cases. How is it done, Mr. Speaker, that all of a sudden, when, uh, car-napping, for example, was omitted, and therefore we did not already include the special law on car-napping? When the crimes punishable under the revised penal code were all eliminated, and we just concentrated on the drugs-related cases, how did we rationalize it, Mr. Speaker, your honor? How did we harmonize it? We, we already eliminated all the crimes punishable under the revised penal code. We eliminated the crimes were supposed to be punishable by death also under the special laws. And what is left, Mr. Speaker, is the special law on comprehensive drugs, Republic Act ninety-five thirty-one, or the, or, or Republic Act... Was that ninety-five thirty-one, or ninety-six? Mr. Speaker, we cannot rationalize or harmonize by simply eliminating the other, uh, special laws and by just concentrating. That is why I am amending this, because we would like to make it more consistent and even simple to defend, Mr. Speaker, because if you use in the interest of justice, public order, and rule of law, I think this is more sufficient, your honor, than invoking another ground of rationalizing and harmonizing the penal sanctions, when in reality, we did not, Mr. Speaker. That is the only reason.
The majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, your honor, there has been a proposed amendment by the honorable Marcoletta. It has been rejected by the honorable sponsor. The appeal has been made. Now the House shall vote either in favor or against the proposed amendment. A vote of "aye" sustains the proposed amendment of the honorable Marcoletta, and a vote of "nay", which the sponsor and the majority asks for, defeats the amendment. The majority asks for your "nay" vote.
Those who are in favor to the proposed amendment, please say "aye". Those who are against, please say "nay". The "nays" have it, the amendment is lost. The majority leader?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, individual amendment.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, in the interest of order, I appeal to our colleagues if they will register the amendments with the majority floor leader, so that we can arrange you in the proper order that you desire.
I, I already have. The majority leader sent a member of the committee to me, and I explained to him where the individual amendment will be put in. I have.
I would like to ask the honorable Rokamora if you would like to give way to the honorable Tasa.
Um, as I understand, there are even more, um, who wants to introduce an amendment? Uh, for one, Congressman Lagman has an additional amendment on page two. Um, Congressman, um... Has another on page, page two? Okay. Williamarin, Congressman Williamarin, and, uh...
May I suggest to do, to the members that wants to have an amendment, to please accost to the, to the majority? to please accost to the Majority Leader?
So with that, Mr. Speaker, I move for the recognition of the Honorable Tom Villarin of the Partilis Akbayan for his proposed amendment. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Representative from Akbayan Partilis, Tom Villarin, is recognized for his amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, I propose, Mr. Speaker, on page two, line fourteen. Line thirteen and fourteen, we retain the title "The Penalty of Life Imprisonment" and delete "Reclusión Perpetua to Death". On line twenty-eight, Mr. Speaker, again, we retain the penalty of life imprisonment and delete "Reclusión Perpetua to Death". And on line forty-one, Mr. Speaker, the penalty of life imprisonment will be retained and the proposed deletion of "Reclusión Perpetua to Death". I so move, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
The sponsor rejects the proposed amendment of Congressman Villarin.
The sponsor rejected the proposed amendment.
Mr. Speaker, can I have my explanation?
You have five minutes, explain.
Well, Mr. Speaker, the current death penalty bill, this substituted bill through committee amendments is a radical departure from the original death penalty bill's file, hastily deliberated and passed by the Committee on Justice. As I recall, Mr. Speaker, during the committee deliberations, the original proposal to focus only on death penalty was rejected and now it is being re-imposed. Well, the proposed amendments done by substitution, Mr. Speaker, raises several questions. One, the proposed death penalty bill was deliberated and debated using various assumptions, statistics, and legal foundations. It started with a proposal of more than twenty crimes and now it has been reduced. What are the basis of removing crimes enumerated in the original House Bill 4727 from the ambit of death penalty? What is the rational use in removing these crimes from the coverage of House Bill 4727? Now, the basic question, Mr. Speaker, what is the basis of imposing death penalty on drug-related cases only? Again, as what was raised earlier by Deputy Speaker Andaya, this will be violative of the equal protection clause because we would be providing a distinction between heinous crimes that are not drug-related and drug-related heinous crimes. So for that, Mr. Speaker, even drug-related offenses should be removed as offenses resulting in the imposition of the ultimate penalty of death. And the public deserves an explanation on these very important questions. So, Madam... Mr. Speaker, I would like to direct the plenary to a violation of our House rules and I'm invoking Section twenty-eight. In Section twenty-eight, Mr. Speaker, the Dangerous... The Committee on Dangerous Drugs has authority over all matters directly and principally relating to illegal and prohibited drugs, controlled precursors and essential chemicals, the production, manufacture, use, and trafficking thereof. So, Mr. Speaker, in the sense that this proposal, this measure, was not deliberated upon in the Dangerous Drugs Committee, ang mangyayari nito, Mr. Speaker, inuuna natin 'yung penalty, inuuna natin 'yung karitela sa kabayo. We have to define the nature of the crimes punishable under the Dangerous Drugs Act before we have this death penalty. I think the danger here, Mr. Speaker, is that I'd like to point out the statement even of the Philippine chemistry community, okay? They have very, very valid points, Mr. Speaker. While we could recognize the important concern against the drug menace, we oppose the provisions that equate dangerous drugs themselves with precursor and essential chemicals because their importance in industry, agriculture, health, education, and research. Inclusion of these chemicals must be done with adequate scientific knowledge. The bill, the proposed bill, does not define and identify what are precursor chemicals and essential chemicals. Virtually, all precursor chemicals and essential chemicals are multi-use chemicals. Precursor chemicals may also be precursors to other important products such as pharmaceuticals, fragrances, cosmetics, agrochemicals, and others. Likewise, essential chemicals may also be essential for many other purposes, including household and health uses. The cost to the economy on this proposed bill can be staggering, Mr. Speaker. And the bill is not scientifically rational. Again, let me point out, Mr. Speaker, mere possession of a precursor chemical or an essential chemical as what is contemplated under the Dangerous Drugs Act is not equivalent to possession or manufacture of dangerous drugs. The proposed bill will criminalize legitimate users and raise the cost of goods and damage economy. The bill will also provide many opportunities for corruption, Mr. Speaker. Kakasuhan ka ng homicide, lalakyan ka ng ten grams, fifty grams, death penalty.
The Majority Leader.
I hope that we have to rethink this proposed measure and recommit under Section twenty-eight. We recommit this to the Dangerous Drugs Committee, Mr. Speaker.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, the Honorable Villarin has proposed his amendment. It was rejected by the sponsor. The appeal has been made. So we now move to voting on the amendment as proposed by the Honorable Villarin. An "aye" vote sustains the amendment and a "nay" vote, which the majority asks for, supports the rejection by our honorable sponsor. The majority asks for your nay vote.
Those who are in favor to the amendment, please say "aye". Aye! Those who are against, please say "nay". Nay! The nays have it. The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, we move for the recognition of the Honorable Raoul Dasa for his proposed amendment.
The gentleman from Samar, Honorable Raoul Dasa, is recognized for his amendment.
Mr. Speaker, a few minutes ago, I tried to explain to the Rules Committee the nature of my amendment and I believe that I will... It would be looked more with favor by the sponsor. If we can... If I can be granted a recess of five minutes so that I can approach him and explain to him the nature of my amendment.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, the Honorable Dasa is free to approach any of the authors or sponsors, but in the interest of all those who wish to make amendments to the bill, may I move now to recognize the Honorable Rav Rokomora for his proposed amendment.
I agree with that.
The Honorable Rokomora is recognized to propose his amendment.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from First District of Albay.
As I previously manifested, I have anterior amendments on page two.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, once again, I seek the indulgence of the Honorable Rokomora. I move to withdraw its recognition and instead recognize the Honorable Edsel Lagman. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from the First District of Albay, Representative Edsel Lagman, is recognized.
But before I proceed with my proposed amendment, I would like to ask the distinguished chairman of the Committee on Justice what the XXX in the draft as of February twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen represent?
Mr. Speaker, your honor, doesn't mean anything, Mr. Speaker, because there was nothing changed from the previous bill, which was the substitute bill presented by the Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, in the substitute bill, there are no XXXs. There are provisions of the existing law, which were retained in the amendment by substitution. And I would like to refer to my copy of the substitute bill. Can I ask for a minute's suspension to get a copy of the draft?
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, rather than waste our time, could we have the sponsor please reply to the query while the Honorable Lagman is free to pick up any materials he may so need?
The distinguished sponsor is directed to reply to the query of the distinguished gentleman from the First District of Albay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, your honors. The XXX appearing on lines twenty-three, thirty-seven, forty-six, seven. Line seven of page three only would reiterate the provisions in the Dangerous Drugs Act that are not being amended. So this is a regular practice in any bills that is filed for which no amendment is being made on an existing law except for those particular sections and/or provisions and/or paragraphs that an amendment is being introduced.
Mr. Speaker, ordinarily and traditionally, the excess... The XXX would represent deletion of certain provisions, not reiteration. Because if the existing provisions are reiterated, they should be reflected in the amendment in the draft so that the members will be fully aware that the existing provisions are reiterated, not deleted. But XXX, the series of XXX would mean a deletion, not a reiteration. For example, Mr. Speaker, under Section four of the draft as of February twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen, in Section four, after the words "decorative and culinary purposes", there appears XXX. However, in the amendment by substitution, there appears a series of provisions which I would like to read and I quote: "The..." "After the decorative and culinary purposes", on line thirty-six of page five of the amendment by substitution, it reads: "The penalty of imprisonment ranging from twelve years and one day to twenty years and a fine ranging from one hundred thousand pesos to five hundred thousand pesos shall be imposed upon any person who, unless authorized by law, shall import any controlled precursor and essential chemical." Is this deleted or retained in the latest draft of the bill as amendment?
The distinguished sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, may I ask our distinguished colleague if we are reading the same document? What I am reading here and what I have as my guide is a... The substitute bill as of February twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen. You may be reading an abandoned version, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
May I know whether in the copy of the version which the distinguished sponsor has, is there this provision included? It is included in any of the previous versions. This provision is included.
As I was saying, perhaps may I refer the distinguished gentleman to look into the February twenty-two, twenty-seven bill, twenty-seventeen bill, so that we will compare apples to apples, Mr. Speaker.
Anyway, could the distinguished sponsor read for the record what appears in his version after the first paragraph of Section four under Section seven of the latest version?
Section four of what? May I be clarified? What page and what line, your honor?
This is page five.
Page five.
Of the first amendment by substitution.
May I reiterate my previous answer that this is an abandoned version that was amended yesterday and he is referring to a different version that, as I said, has been abandoned. So may I refer the distinguished gentleman to please refer to the version as of February twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen?
Well, that is precisely the draft where there are series of XXX. And according to the distinguished sponsor, the XXXX would represent reiteration of existing provisions, not deletion. But if there are reiteration, then they should appear in the draft as of February twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen. Let me proceed. In the amendment by substitution, there is the paragraph which reads: "The maximum penalty provided under this section shall be imposed upon any person who, unless authorized under this act, shall import or bring into the Philippines any dangerous drug and/or controlled precursor and essential chemicals through the use of diplomatic passport, diplomatic facilities, or any other means involving his or her official status intended to facilitate the unlawful entry of the same. In addition, the diplomatic passport shall be confiscated and canceled." Is that still being retained in the draft as of February twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen?
Again, Mr. Speaker, your honor, again, this is referring to a previous abandoned bill that is inappropriate for discussion in the period of amendment. At any rate, Mr. Speaker, perhaps to abbreviate this proceeding, I would request that the distinguished gentleman already proceed with the proposed amendment because we are in a period of amendment and the first thing that ought to be expressed is what is the proposed amendment for which I can respond to rather than go back and forth to discussions on an abandoned version of the bill.
Well, I premise my second amendment with a statement that I would ask certain questions. with a statement that I would ask certain questions. But in any event, considering that the distinguished sponsor has said that the provisions I have cited have been abandoned, then let it be of record. Now, let me proceed to my second amendment. On page 2, line 28, before the words "recreación perpetua", insert the following, quote, "recreación temporal 2", unquote. And after the words "recreación perpetua", delete the words, quote, "to death", unquote. Consequently, line 28 should read, "Penalty of recreación temporal to recreación perpetua."
The sponsor rejects?
The sponsor rejects the proposed amendment because this is not consistent with the purpose and even the title of the bill.
The sponsor had rejected the proposed amendment?
Then may I appeal the rejection of my amendment to the body? And I would request five minutes.
You have five minutes.
Under our Constitution, there are stringent conditions under which the limited plenary power of Congress to reimpose the death penalty, namely, A, compelling reasons, and B, involving heinous crimes. From the very start, even in the subcommittee level, the proponents have not presented unequivocally and conclusively the existence of compelling reasons for heinous crimes. In the same manner, there has been no assertion whatsoever by the sponsors of the bill that the sale, trading, administration, dispensation, delivery, distribution, and transportation of dangerous drugs and/or controlled precursors and essential elements would satisfy the stringent conditions of the Constitution for the imposition of a death penalty. Number two, even under our international agreements, more specifically, the International Convention on Civil and Political Rights, where we are a state party, we undertook to exercise all serious endeavors to eliminate the death penalty from our penal system. This ICCPR was ratified by the Philippines shortly before the 1987 Constitution abolished the death penalty. And subsequently, in 2007, we ratified the Second Optional Protocol to the ICCPR, wherein we committed not to impose the death penalty. I would like to underscore the chronology of our ratification. We made that ratification shortly after we abolished the death penalty in 2006. All covenants, all exhortations of the United Nations, particularly the International Narcotics Control Board, would say and declare that the death penalty is not impossible on drug-related offenses. And likewise, Mr. Speaker, the death penalty is an abhorrent punitive penalty. It defies the sanctity of life, which no less than Pope Francis has said that the sanctity of life extends even to the criminal. For those reasons, Mr. Speaker, I would appeal to the body to reject the position of the sponsoring committee declining my amendment.
The Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, the Honorable Lagman has proposed his amendment. It has been rejected by the sponsor. The proper appeal has been made. And now the body will vote on the proposed amendment. An "aye" vote will sustain the amendment of the Honorable Lagman. And a "nay" vote sustains the rejection by the sponsor. And the majority asks for a "nay" vote, Mr. Speaker.
Those on favor to the amendment, please say "aye". Those who are against, please say "nay". The nays have it, the amendment is lost. The Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, it appears that the presiding officer had a misappreciation of the ayes and nays votes. But I'm not going to pursue that, Mr. Speaker. And I would like to relinquish the floor temporarily to the distinguished Representative Rokamora for his amendments, subject to my prior amendments on page 2.
The Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I move for the recognition of the Honorable Rav Rokamora of the Lone District of Ciquiho for his proposed amendments.
The Honorable Rav Rokamora is recognized for his amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I proceed with my proposed amendment, I would like to state, just to foreclose any thought that I am abandoning my stand against reimposition of death penalty, I would like to restate that I am against the reimposition of death penalty. But I am introducing this amendment in case that this bill under consideration will pass, to forestall any infirmities therein. My amendment starts with line 47, which is section 25. This has something to do with the aggravating circumstances of being under the influence of drugs. I believe that we have misconstrued the concept of aggravating or qualifying circumstances. Aggravating... okay.
The Majority Leader?
Could we ask the Honorable Rokamora to state his proposed amendment for acceptance or rejection by the sponsor? And should there be a need, there can be an explanation of the proposed amendment?
My proposal is to remove section 25, which makes under the influence, the circumstance rather of being under the influence of drugs as an aggravating circumstance. And may I be allowed to explain?
What does the sponsor say?
The sponsor rejects the proposed amendment for the reason that this is an existing provision of the existing law and that the bill itself, the title of this bill itself is imposing the death penalty. So we are not amending the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act. The proper venue for raising this is on the amendment of the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act, not this particular bill.
Representative Rokamora?
I believe there is no infirmity in amending the Dangerous Drugs Act.
You want to explain your amendment? So I'm giving you five minutes.
Okay. As I've said, we have misconstrued the very reason why we aggravate or qualify crimes by attendant circumstances. The very reason why we aggravate or qualify a crime by virtue of certain circumstances is because of the greater perversity of the criminal. Let me simplify this. Under our present revised penal code, intoxication is an alternative circumstance. So that if one drinks liquor to embolden oneself to commit a crime, then it becomes an aggravating circumstance. Otherwise, if the commission of the crime is just just happened when he appears to be, when someone is drunk, then it is mitigating. The reason here is simple. One who is not in full control of his faculties could not be deemed to be more perverse in the commission of the crime. I'm not saying that we come up with an alternative circumstance. What I am proposing is that we remove the provision, making it an aggravated circumstance once and for all. Now, the objection on the part of the proponent stems from the fact that it becomes an amendment of an existing law, the Dangerous Drugs Act. But I say we can lawfully amend this because it is well within or it is germane with the title of this proposed bill. Proposed bill speaks of increasing penalties to death. Now, whether or not we aggravate a crime goes into the determination whether we impose death penalty or not. So I would say it is germane and there is no legal infirmity in introducing an amendment to the Dangerous Drugs Act through this bill under consideration. Again, I would like to state that the basic reason why we aggravate a crime by virtue of certain circumstances is because of the greater perversity. Let me ask you then, could you say that a person who is not in his right mind or is not in full control of his faculties is more perverse? I say not. Besides, we forget what we have always said. A user is a victim, and it is the user who is the real criminal. So if he is a victim, why do we punish him? I say let us remove that circumstance of being under the influence of drugs as an aggravating circumstance. Because, as I've said, it goes against the basic principle that a person who is not in his right mind should not be punished or if at least his crime not be aggravated.
The Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, the Honorable Rokamora has proposed his amendment. It has been rejected by the sponsor. The proper appeal has been made. So now we divide the House. An "aye" vote sustains the amendment of the Honorable Rokamora, while a "nay" vote supports the rejection by our sponsor. And the majority asks for your "nay" vote, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are in favor to the amendment, please say "aye". Those who are against, please say "nay". The nays have it, the amendment is lost. The Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I move for the recognition of the gentleman from the Partilis Cabayan, the Honorable Harry Roque, for his amendments to our House bill.
The gentleman from Cabayan Partilis, Honorable Harry Roque, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. I have two sets of proposed amendments, the first of which is on section 6, page 5, line 43 until line 15. Essentially, my proposed amendment is to limit, limit the means by which to carry out the death penalty only to lethal injection. Mr. Speaker, may I be given five minutes to explain my proposed amendment?
We will ask first the sponsor, what does the sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker?
I will recognize you on the proper time, gentleman from President Cala.
This is the proper time because I have an anterior amendment on page 2, as I previously reserved. With due apologies to my colleague Congressman Roque.
I will yield, Mr. Speaker, to Congressman that man.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I move for the recognition of the Honorable Edsel Lagman for his proposed amendments.
Honorable Edsel Lagman is recognized.
On page 2, line 41, before the words, quote, "recreación perpetua", unquote, insert the following, quote, "recreación temporal 2", unquote. And after the words, "recreación perpetua", delete the words, quote, "to death", unquote. Consequently, line 41 should read, quote, "of recreación temporal to recreación perpetua", close quote.
What does the sponsor say?
I think it's an anterior amendment, but I'd rather... I have an anterior amendment.
This is on page 2?
I would not want to intrude into the time with the distinguished gentleman from Albay.
What does the sponsor say?
The sponsor is lost as to what I will respond to, Mr. Speaker. I hear two members of this House.
I only recognize the gentleman from the First District of Albay. He has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, let me just point out first that, well, first is we would like to register our omnibus rejection on any proposition to amend by way of deletion of death penalty because this defeats the very purpose and intent of House Bill 4727. And so, in the interest of time, and likewise, because we keep on going back and forth, we were already discussing page 3. And then all of a sudden, belatedly, the distinguished gentleman from Albay will introduce amendments to a previous page. I think, Mr. Speaker, I'm also getting lost in this way by which these proposed amendments are being made. Mr. Speaker, I made a reservation previously that I have anterior amendments on page 2. And this was not rejected by the Majority Floor Leader. Moreover, it is improper to make omnibus rejection of individual amendments not yet introduced. Individual amendments should be treated individually as they are presented or introduced by members of this House.
The sponsor had already rejected the proposed amendment of the gentleman from Albay?
I have not heard any rejection.
What does the sponsor say?
Well, we reiterate our omnibus rejection of any and all matters that will propose amendment by way of deletion of death penalty. Let me point out, Mr. Speaker, Your Honors, that this has been covered already by section 3 in page 1, where this particular section defines imposition of death penalty, heinous crimes define. So we have already covered this and there was no objection to this particular provision. So that the clear intent of this House bill is really to impose death penalty and therefore...
and therefore, any and all propositions contrary to it can no longer be raised after we have already considered Page 1, Section 3 of House Bill 4727, Mr. Speaker.
The sponsor had rejected the proposed amendment of the gentleman from Albay.
I appealed the rejection to the body.
You have five minutes to explain.
Mr. Speaker, there can be no omnibus upgrades for individual amendments. Precisely, individual amendments are being proposed, and they are recognized by the body because individual members of the House have different versions on their amendments. So individual amendments should be based on a baseline per page basis as it is the tradition of this House. In support of my amendment, let me quote, "In a public hearing to launch Amnesty International's nationwide campaign for the abolition of the death penalty, Dorothea B. Morfield, whose nineteen-year-old son was murdered by a theft in Virginia, USA, declared, and I quote, 'I look at the death penalty from the narrowest of viewpoints, and I have rejected it. I know without any doubt that it should not exist. I want compassion for those who have been wrong. I want compassion for those who are left behind. I want the guilty appropriately punished, but only by recognizing the sanctity of life can we truly grieve for those who have lost it. By putting a criminal to death, we cheapen the value of human life. I cannot accept that my son's life was too important', unquote. Dorothea Morfield is not alone. Although she was the mother of a victim of crime, of murder, she did not wish death on the perpetrators. She was looking for justice, not for vengeance. In the same manner that many members of fine, the association of victims, families of victims of a voluntary disappearance, like my family, are not wishing death to the perpetrators of the heinous crimes against our kin because we are looking for justice, not vengeance. According to Pope Francis, vengeance is not justice. And this is the reason why we are proposing these amendments to exclude the death penalty from our penal system. I reiterate my appeal.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Lagman has proposed his amendment. It has been rejected by the honorable sponsor. The proper appeal has been made, and we now go to voting on the amendment of the Honorable Lagman. An "aye" vote sustains the amendment of the Honorable Lagman, and a "nay" vote, which the majority asks for, sustains the rejection by the sponsor. The majority asks for a "nay" vote, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are in favor to the amendment, please say "aye."
Aye!
Those who are against, please say "nay."
Nay!
The nays have it. The amendment is lost. Session suspended. Session resumed. The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. I move for the recognition of the gentleman from the Partilis Cabayan, the Honorable Harry Roque, for his proposed amendments. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Cabayan Partilis, Representative Harry Roque, is recognized for his amendment.
Mr. Speaker, with due deference to Representative Roque,
The Majority Leader.
I have anterior amendments. On Page 3.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. With the indulgence of the Honorable Roque, I move for the recognition of the Honorable Edsel Lagman for his proposed amendment.
Honorable Edsel Lagman is recognized.
On Page 3, Line 2, before the words, quote, "recretion perpetua", unquote, insert the following, quote, "recretion temporal 2", unquote, and after the words, quote, "recretion perpetua", unquote, delete the words, quote, "to death", unquote. Consequently, Mr. Speaker, Line 2 on Page 3 should read, quote, "of recretion temporal to recretion perpetua", unquote.
What does the sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, Your Honors, we register our continuing objection to this omnibus rejection, and the sponsor would like a ruling on our omnibus objection because this is clearly dilatory because the same reasons were being advanced every time that this objection is... Or this amendment is proposed by the distinguished gentleman from Albay.
The distinguished sponsor has rejected the proposed amendment?
Mr. Speaker, I move to appeal the rejection.
You have five minutes to explain.
Mr. Speaker, the principal reason why I am proposing this amendment is that the death penalty is an abhorrent penalty which should not find any justification or inclusion in our penal system. It destroys the sanctity of life. It is not a solution to criminality. It is not a solution to poverty. It is not a solution to inequity. It is not a solution to the flawed and corrupt pillars of justice like the police establishment, the prosecutorial, and the judicial systems. Moreover, let me reiterate that under UN advisement, including the International Court of Control Board, there is no recommendation that death penalty should be imposed on drug-related offenses. The contrary is abailing, that only imprisonment, which does not destroy the sanctity of life, should be imposed. Again, let me reiterate that under the UN Drug Convention, to which we are a signatory, this convention does not prescribe the death penalty for drug-related offenses. For those reasons, Mr. Speaker, I appeal the rejection of my amendment to the body.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the sponsor wishes to reiterate our request for a ruling on our omnibus rejection, Mr. Speaker.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. Our parliamentary status is that the same amendment has been brought up repeatedly, and the same rejection. Hence, the omnibus rejection of any amendment that seeks to change the very nature of the bill being discussed. So the majority supports the omnibus motion of the sponsor in rejecting all such and same similar amendments.
The chair sustains the ruling of the majority.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Buay Partilis?
With the kind indulgence of the two gentlemen, the sponsor and Honorable Lagman, this representation, and many of us on the floor, would like to be given a short definition of the term omnibus rejection. This is the first time I've heard this, and I have years of experience in parliamentary procedures. I have yet to remember and to recall a statement coming from the sponsor or the Majority Leader of the term omnibus rejection. When there is a proposal coming from the floor for any amendment, we believe that it should be ruled on the basis of that particular amendment and not citing an omnibus rejection. Because that would be a very, very bad precedent if we accept it as a regular term in our parliamentary procedures. Automatic and omnibus rejection means people can no longer air their views on specific matters, and it could be misconstrued as nothing but an effort to railroad the bill. We can waste a lot of time on this bill, Mr. Speaker. We can spend a lot of time deliberating on it for as long as each member is allowed to air his individual amendment. And if it so happens, the individual amendments are all in consonance with one term and one theme, then we believe that an omnibus rejection will do. Mabuti po sigurong tangiyan ko't tangihan isa-isa. Subalit, bigyan natin ang kalyaan, magpaliwanag, at humingi ng individual amendment ang sino man. Let them be rejected, the sponsor, in a manner provided for by the rules. And definitely, an omnibus rejection is anathema.
Clarification to the gentleman from Buay Partilis. First, are you only asking the definition of omnibus rejection?
Yes.
It is not an appeal to the ruling of the chair?
No. We would like to be clarified as to what an omnibus rejection actually means, and where is it coming from?
The distinguished sponsor, please.
From what book or parliamentary rules are they getting it? And I would consider this a point of order so that we may be guided in our discussions.
Let me respond to that by giving a point of information, and I'd like to quote Merriam-Webster in the definition of omnibus, and I quote, "One, of relating to or providing for many things at once; two, containing or including many items", like an omnibus bill. That is the direct definition. But anyway, for clarification, we have already premised our omnibus rejection on the matter of any proposition to amend by way of deletion the word "death penalty" because this is inconsistent with the clear intent and purpose of the law. So we have done that precisely. We have been listening patiently to the proposed amendment and to the lengthy explanations being made by the gentleman from Albay. And he merely recites the same reasons for wanting to introduce those amendments. So this is why we have registered our omnibus rejection, thereof, only on any proposition to amend by way of deletion the word "death penalty" in House Bill Number 4727, which seeks to impose death penalty on certain heinous crimes. That is the clear intent and purpose of the omnibus rejection that the sponsor had raised before this August body.
The Majority Leader, please state the parliamentary status with respect to the omnibus rejection.
Mr. Speaker, the gentleman...
The Majority Leader.
Did not cite the rules I was asking for. He's stating his position and his opinion. We are basing a point of order.
If it's a point of order, gentleman from Buay Partilis, will you kindly cite the rules that are being violated? Please.
The proof.
No, no. You're the one asking for the point of order. You're the... So you should have...
I'm questioning the term omnibus objection because it says that provided for in the rules.
Sorry to the gentleman from Buay Partilis. There's no any... There's no... No rules that are being violated, so there's no point of order? The Majority Floor Leader.
Because the gentleman has not provided any rule that I am questioning precisely. I should be told what rule he's...
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. To clarify, our esteemed colleague, the Honorable Atienza, raised a point of information. A point of order accompanies normally the rule being broken or the process being broken. So the gentleman from Partilis Buay was asking a point of information. And out of respect to the gentleman, we did not interrupt him, even though we are in the parliamentary status now of voting on the amendment as introduced by the gentleman from Albay. That amendment was rejected by the sponsor. The proper appeal was made, so now we go into voting.
Mr. Speaker.
I vote, please. We are voting, honorable colleague.
I am citing Section 104.
We are in the process of voting, please, gentleman from...
We will entertain your query, Honorable Atienza. After we vote on the appeal of the Honorable Lagman.
All I want is clarificatory answers. We do not... We cannot...
The Majority Leader, please state the question to be voted.
For, in the interest of clarity of our members.
If you insist on omnibus rejection, we will insist on a continuing objection.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor.
That's precisely what I'd like to prevent.
The honorable sponsor has attempted to answer and has met the query of the Honorable Atienza as to what an omnibus objection is. So now we leave it to the body. An "aye" vote sustains the amendment of the Honorable Lagman, and a "nay" vote, which the majority asks for, sustains the omnibus rejection of our distinguished sponsor, and the majority asks for your "nay" vote.
Those who are in favor to the amendment, please say "aye."
Aye!
Those who are against, please say "nay."
Nay!
The nays have it, the amendment is lost. The Majority Leader.
I heard the nays coming from one side only. We heard the "aye" from the other.
Mr. Speaker.
We are questioning the statement of the president of the House.
Under Section 115, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, a motion to divide the House shall be carried if one-fifth of the members present vote for it. So thus, could the speaker please call for those who are in favor of nominal voting to please stand?
Those who are in favor for nominal voting, please rise. The motion for nominal voting is lost. The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, you did not even ask those who are against nominal voting.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. One-fifth has to be met. There is no need to count those in opposition. I move for the further recognition of the gentleman from Albay, who still has the floor, to propose further amendments.
The gentleman from the First District of Albay is recognized for his amendment.
What point of order, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Speaker?
But point of order, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. When we go to nominal voting, the one-fifth of those present, considering that there is a quorum, should be counted. There was no count of those who rose in favor of nominal voting. How can now we establish...
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I move again for the previous motion, those in favor of nominal voting, and according to our rules, a number of forty-six has to be met. Please be asked to rise.
So what is the pleasure of the Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, before we do that...
I move that those who are in favor of nominal voting, please be asked to rise.
Before we go on nominal voting, let us...
Those who are in favor to the nominal voting, please rise, and I am directing the secretariat to please count. There were twenty-three who stand up. The motion for nominal voting is lost.
Mr. Speaker, in order to determine whether a motion for nominal voting is lost, there should be a determination of how many members are present in the session hall, so that we can accurately... So that we can accurately say that one-fifth stood up or one-fifth did not approve of the motion for nominal voting. But we have that established. What we are talking about is those are those present during the roll call, but after the roll call, the number of members in the session hall has greatly diminished. So there is a need to establish the basis for the one-fifth of the members of the House in favor of nominal voting. Let us put this House in order.
The Majority Leader. Two-hundred twenty...
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Lagman is perfectly correct that one-fifth of the members present has counted during our quorum call. We have two-hundred-twenty-nine members present, so forty-six is required. And I would just like, for the information of the body and for those listening, we want to make use of the time to give a chance to all our colleagues to propose their amendments so that we can perfect this legislation. So with that, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor...
Mr. Speaker.
May I recognize the Honorable Lagman for his proposed amendment?
Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Lagman is recognized for his amendment?
I am not yet proposing my amendment, but let us not derogate the rules by the pretext that we are giving everybody the opportunity to introduce individual amendments. The roll call showed two-hundred-plus responded to the call, but by a simple viewing of those present, there are no two-hundred-plus members in the session hall. I call for a second roll call.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, this is taking time away from amendments. I must object to the motion of the gentleman.
There's an objection to the motion?
Mr. Speaker, we support the call for a roll call because we do not see two-hundred-twenty-nine anymore. What I see before me is about one-hundred-twenty-seven, and that's twenty-three or twenty... Twenty-three could form to be one-fifth.
The Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, since it has been very apparent that what they've been doing here is just not to introduce honest-to-goodness amendments. This bill is for the reimposition of the death penalty. The amendments being introduced is from to change the penalty from reclusión temporal to reclusión perpetua, even if we have already approved Section 3 on Page 1 of the bill, which is entitled reimposition of the death penalty. If this will go on, and now they are invoking a roll call, I will join, and I will move to call the roll, and after we determine the actual number of members, I will move to terminate the period of amendments. Mr. Speaker, so I move that we call the roll now, and I invite all members to come here, because after the roll call, I will move to terminate the period of amendments.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of the members.
Mr. Speaker. Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abilianosa. Abu. Abueg. Charon. Agop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Ajom. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabao. Aglipay Binyar. Albano. Alkala. Aliano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantallón. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Argones. Arbison. Arsenias. Arenas. Atienza. Aumentato. Bagaur. Bagachic. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawin. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Bilaro. Belmonte Villisiano. Belmonte Euségris Super. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Vernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Birón. Bulinya. Bundok. Jordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Rosas. Bulut Piktang. Kagas. Calderon. Calixtroviano. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casofrants. Casofredenil. Katamco. Kaitano. Celeste. Cerádica. Ciriles. Chávez. Chipeco. Co. Cuango. Juliantes. Cortés. Cortona. Posalan. Crisólico. Kuah. Quaresma. Cueva. Delipe. Dalog. Dasa. DeSous. De Vera. De Venesia. De Pensor. Delmar. Del Osario. De Los Montalia. De Paporo Abdullah. De Paporo Kalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Ergel. Ermita Boyin. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Eusebio. Ivardone. Paríñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Periol. Moherendo. Flores. Fortún. Fortuno. Fente Belia. Garbin. García Agüendulin. García Enrique. Gose... García Albano. Gori Richard. Gori Sharon. Gasa Taya. Kachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Arreledón. González Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Allosos. Javier. Co. Común. Laban Laban. Naxon. Lagman. Lenete. Laugán. Lasatin. Beachon. Ni. Dibkaychong. Lubrigat. López Benur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Magpagalaroyo. Maseta. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magutadatus Artó. Magutadatus Ajit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mendín. Mendoza. Mercado. Beresol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nulasco. Núñez Malañaon. Bominal. Okampo. Libares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Pangaliban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pilinter. Pineda. Plaza. Timisiya Segavás. Kimbo. Rodaza. Ramírez Sato. Ramos. Relámpagos. Revilia. Robobuno. Robes. Rogomora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romaldo. Roqueyari. Rogeroyello. Sacnalan. Sagarberia. Sahali. Salsera. Salimbagon. Salo. Salón. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Rehto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Sevillano. Semah. Xiao. Silberio. Singsong. Suansiga Estrelita. Suansiguracho. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambuntin. Tanangelina. Tanmilagrosa. Tanshidi. Teada. Teves. Chanco. Tin. Tiño. Tolentino. Treñas. Tugna. Tupaz. Turabinataman. Ti. Umalí. Unnabia. Ugar. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Barreta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Bilarde. Bilasco. Bilasco Catera. Vilasco Cattera. Veloso. Bergara. Bilya Puerte. Bilya Nueva. Bilyarika. Bilyarin. Vilago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mileso. Yap Victor. Yu. Somor Markarmin. Somor Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. The Speaker is present. Mister Speaker, the roll call shows that two-hundred-twenty-seven... two-hundred-twenty-seven members responded to the call.
There were two-hundred-twenty-seven members responded to the call. The Chair declares the presence of a quorum. The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker.
Our parliamentary status is that a while ago, there was a motion for nominal voting where the Chair made the count of twenty-three, but the gentleman from the First District of Albaí wanted to have a second roll call, which the Majority Leader joined and called for the roll. So our parliamentary status now, and to satisfy the gentleman, I move that we now have a vote on the nominal voting. Those who want nominal voting will say aye.
No, no, no.
They will stand. And those against will remain seated.
Uh, before, Mister Speaker, we go...
I move... Those who are in favor for nominal voting, please stand up. May I direct the Secretariat to please count the numbers who stood up?
Please do not include me. I'm just standing here. I'm my own strong.
There were twenty-eight who stood up, and according to the Secretariat, one-fifth of two-hundred-twenty-seven is forty-six. Nominal voting is lost.
Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
The Majority Leader.
I now move that we recognize the gentleman from the Third District of Negroes Oriental, Arni Teves, for his amendment.
Representative Arni Teves is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, good evening. Anyway, amendment for... my proposed amendment for Section Four, it's on line eighteen, page two and line nineteen. We remove the phrase regardless of the quantity and purity involved. Then on line twenty-three, let us insert values here on Section eleven, line seventeen to forty-three. This be inserted here in line... after line twenty-one to put values in the... in the section.
What does the sponsor say?
And may I continue, Mister?
Mister Speaker, may I move for a one-minute suspension?
Schedule suspended.
The Majority Leader. Sessions resume. The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, Your Honor, based on our agreement, the Honorable Teves would like to withdraw his amendment.
Yeah, I withdraw my amendment. I withdraw my amendment, Mister Speaker.
With that, Mister Speaker, I move to close the period of individual amendments on House Bill four-seven-two-seven.
So move, Mister Speaker. Any objection?
Mister Speaker, point of order.
There's a point of order, uh... Please cite the rules that being violated.
Uh, Mister Speaker, I have been recognized earlier during the period of amendment. I have made my amendment.
There's no rules that being violated. Please state the rules.
The period of amendment, uh, Mister Speaker, I've been recognized earlier, but the Majority Floor Leader asked me, by way of a favor, to give way to Congressman Lagman, and I did. I had already, in fact, made my proposed amendment, and I was about... I asked already for five minutes.
The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker.
And I can assure...
The Majority Leader.
Your Honor, it's an honest-to-goodness amendment.
Mister Speaker, Your Honor.
It is not in the nature of an omnibus objection, Mister Speaker.
We understand the... of the manifestation, the point of order of the Honorable Roque. In effect, it is an objection to my motion to close the period of amendments. It has been objected to. Therefore, we now divide the House. Those that are in favor of my motion...
Mister Speaker, before the division, may we be allowed to just manifest? One-minute manifestation.
The Majority Leader. Mister Speaker, we are now in the process of voting. I have a motion. It has been objected to. Let me explain our vote. An aye vote sustains my motion to close the period of debate, and the majority asks... For your aye vote to close the period of amendments, and a nay vote sustains the objection to close the period of amendments.
Those who are in favor to close the period of amendment, please say aye. Aye! Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it, the period of amendments for House Bill four-seven-two-seven is now closed. The Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for approval on second reading of House Bill four-seven-two-seven. So move, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill four-two-seven, four-seven-two-seven, for second reading. Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it.
Mister Speaker.
The House Bill four-seven-two-seven is approved on second reading.
Mister Speaker.
The Majority Leader.
Point of order, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I move to adjourn till... Till Monday.
The sessions adjourn until, uh, March six, two thousand seventeen, at four in the afternoon.